Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 19th meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Vanco, could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Rahauer.
Rajah.
Mrs. Mailey.
Um, here.
Mrs. Herman.
Oh, here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Uh, here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Presentations, Mr. Cherry.
Uh, no formal presentations for this evening, so we can move on to public comments.
Okay, public comment, this will be our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please comment to the microphones and state your name and address for the record.
Jason McKinney, 6691 Dethers Mill Road. Sorry, not feeling too well. First off, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I spent my day reviewing the proposals for repair and replace. And I want to implore the board to take a look at what you intend to do here in the district like you would manage your own personal finances. Because we're looking at seventy-plus million dollars. The average median income, household income for Dover, as I read today, was forty-two thousand dollars. It's not a lot of money. Going into this, the initial estimate was fifty to fifty-three million. Granted, some of that comes out of the general fund, and there's a capital, Capital Project Fund that puts together, what, eleven? With a state grant of another two million, maybe thirteen million. It's a little shy. So, I was, uh, just ask you to look at this logically, please. Don't shackle us to a huge debt. Four years ago, I believe it was, Dr. Krantz sat in that seat and said, "The district's going to be bankrupt due to the retirement issues and the retirement funds." Kudos to whoever implemented the changes, because it looks like you guys have done well. But, um, please don't shackle us to a huge debt like that, because things can change, just like they do it in your personal homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Board President's Communication. We did not have an executive session today, and we have nothing else to report. So, we will move right into our committee reports, and we'll start with the Comprehensive Planning Committee with Mrs. Mailey.
Okay, we actually had three other people tonight other than myself, which was great to have an additional person. Tonight, we looked at some of our goals and strategies on the comprehensive plan, and we talked about ways we can help support our teachers to empower them to implement some of these strategies. This will involve coordinating efforts among all parties, such as instructional learning teams, teachers, school counselors, interventionists, deans and principals. This is something we need to implement as part of our PLCs. Our goal here is to keep this a working document. We need periodic interaction with the staff to generate feedback and open communication, so that all feel a part of this comprehensive plan. And that was it.
Any questions from Mrs. Mailey? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Facilities with Mr. Emmig, Mr. Rahauer, and Mrs. Britton.
Okay, um, we did have a person from the public come tonight, and of course, his question was, "What is our next step?" And I had relayed to him that, at this point, we have to determine which architect we want to use. And then we go into a lot more detail on that, and Mr. Nelson also stated that you're looking at the possibility of nothing happening with all paperwork until March or April or May. So, um, comments on renovations, that was brought up, is that depends on if you renovate the high school and the intermediate school, students could not be in either of the buildings during renovations. There's no way possible that could happen. If you wanted to get portables, you would spend, for used portables, at least thirty thousand dollars. And it wasn't stipulated by any of the four architects, but you cannot collect PlanCon funds if you build on the high school site. You cannot. And recommended acreage to build a new building would be fifty-three acres that you would need. What the board has to decide is, after, of course, we decide on an architect, is what are the specifications you want for a building or renovation? We have to decide, what do we want? As far as the baseball and softball field, um, we need to also decide what we want to do with them fields. Recommendation was, we could put, uh, a field down on the lower practice fields at the high school. That was a recommendation. Another topic was, and Mr. Cook brought this up Tuesday, is the sound system at the intermediate school. Two speakers have arrived yesterday, and right now, they're not certain exactly where they're going to place them, or if that will solve the problem. Another recommendation was made was, why don't we just have all the events from the elementaries and the intermediate school come to the high school and use the auditorium? Because that is air-conditioned. You have plenty of room, you have plenty of parking. Mr. Nelson had stated, back when the concerts were being held at the elementary schools, the community would park on the grass, and if it was wet like it is now, they would get stuck and cause ruts. So, the idea was, and Mr. Wassler had said that all the principals has to do is try and get together, figure out a calendar that we can plan all these events, so we could hold things at the high school. I know with the musical, I think it's, what is it, three months, I think he had stated that the high school was taken because of the musical. Mr. Benton had stated that the CTE grant that was brought up in November was received, and the banner marker is being used. And, uh, the high school gym, if we wanted to air-condition that, it would cost roughly three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars to air-condition the high school gym. As far as the D-ten list, blinds at North Salem and Live will be completed. And, um, we had talked about purchasing a bucket truck on the D-ten list for changing light bulbs and stuff like that, so... Mrs. Britton, you have anything else to add to the committee? Mr. Rahauer, anything else?
Yeah, I raised a question if, uh, Ms. Jen Vanco can answer it or not. If not, she can have her next meeting. Is the high school part of the bond issue, or is that not included in the bond issue that's paid off?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Where the high school, we're still paying that, you know, we have like forty-six million in bond issue. Is the high school part of that bond issue?
Um, through refunding for, through, um, you know, for the various years, for the different projects. Now, the high school goes back a far, long time ago, but we still do have debt out there that is related to renovations or additions at the high school. That is, uh, current, you know, we continue to refund and gain savings on those. So, it's hard to tag our bond issues back to their original project when they happened twenty, thirty, forty years ago.
Well, the last one was done, as you said, in two thousand and one.
Correct, yes, and we have refunded that debt, and we still have it on our books.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as far as, and as far as Mr. McKinney's comments, um, I agree that we should not burden the community with a lot of extra money, because the senior citizens have a difficult time trying to pay their taxes down, so... That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Yes, question. Did I hear you say that, um, when, if we would renovate the high school or the middle school, that the kids have to be out of the buildings?
They wouldn't be able to be in the buildings if you're renovating because of all the construction going on. And we're trying to decide, where would we put those students? If we renovated the intermediate school, where would we put those number of students?
But I thought the architects said that there were ways to do that, that, to do one section at a time and work at different areas, and that the students could be in one area.
Mr. Wassler, his daughter attends Littlestown, they're renovating, adding on the back, and all them students have to be put down in the basement, because there's no way of conducting classes up with the renovations going on.
I think we're saying the same thing. It'll become maybe a logistical situation, probably what happened at Dover Elementary. I would also assume it happened at Wagglestown. It would just be one of those things, we'd have to work with the architect to ensure that we were shuffling the kids around to make sure that they're free of dust or noise or any other types of dangerous activities. But I don't think we need to evacuate or upset the entire building.
Okay.
But I, you know, all four architect firms, they just didn't tell us some things that we really should have known. I mean, telling us that we can, uh, that we can, we'll not get PlanCon money if we build on the high school. They never told us that, none of them, so...
I believe even it goes further than that. It's not that we won't get PlanCon money, but if we were to, for instance, build a new high school on the high school site, the money that we did get from the previous renovation would have to be paid back.
Yep.
Which is a pretty sizable amount of money.
I currently have an email out to, um, the Department of Education, asking them, um, what kind of funds we are talking about that we would, that would have to be reimbursed, um, you know, what monies we would lose, and so on. Again, going back twenty, thirty, forty years, you know, for all of us, is very difficult to do, to be able to estimate how much money we would be talking. So, um, waiting on a response from PDE to kind of give us that information.
Well, we also did talk about the possibility of trailers and how expensive the trailers think. It was thirty thousand dollars is what was said to bring in...
And that's, that's just for a used and not a brand-new one.
And, um, the fact of, if we do renovations while the children are in schools, how is that going to impact not only their learning environment, but the staff as well? And how able they are to provide a quality education to the kids with everything going around? And then it was also talked about that if we were to look at the middle school site and build new, it would be completely separate from the middle school. So, the middle school would still be able to house its current students while construction is going on at a different area with minimal disruption to the ju, the middle school, the intermediate school students and faculty, if that makes sense.
I don't want to get this, I don't understand why kids can't be, I know nothing, so... Can't be in the middle, McKissick wanted to add something over to the right and something to the left. Why can't, they can't be in the middle, huh?
Well, and I said, just from personal experience, when I was in high school, there was a partial renovation project at my, at New Oxford. And even just having the wires hanging down from, you know, as we're being, you know, trying to muddle through these tiny little hallways, because hallways were shut off, so you had double the kids in one hallway. It took us twice as long to get to the, their classes. So, you have to think about things like that, and how it becomes disruptive to, you know, the kids and their quality of education, even if it seems like it might not.
And Steve said that we have to pay off the high school before we do any more there.
No, if, if we, if we were to build on the high school site, the PlanCon money, not only would we not qualify for PlanCon money, we would have to pay back the PlanCon money. Is it what we still owe?
What we have, we have been reimbursed, um, through the PlanCon process.
I didn't know.
From the previous renovation.
Yeah, from previous.
Nobody told you that was anything from...
Less than twenty years ago, so...
The two thousand and one or whatever, okay.
Yes.
That's a pretty substantial amount of money, I think.
Six million dollars, was it something like that? Was it big? We'll have to calculate that out, so... Jen has an email out to PDE.
It was a pretty substantial amount of money, so, but definitely something to take into consideration.
So, is that information that the architects should have been knowledgeable of before they talked with us about it? I mean, is that, because you said, none of the architects mentioned that. I mean, is that something that they are supposed to be well-versed in, or is that on us to, to kind of work through all of that?
PDE has all of that information, so they would have been able to contact PDE and get that background information.
And is that only if we build at the high school, but if we renovate, we don't have to pay that money back?
It depends what you're renovating, and, again, again, you're touching a building twice in a twenty-year period. You're not going to get your PlanCon reimbursement unless there's an exception filed, and to get that through based on the moratorium is going to be very difficult.
I thought somebody said...
Almost impossible.
One of the people there said that they've done that before, and it was not a big...
Yes, one of them, I don't remember which one it was.
Yeah, somebody did say that to us.
Yes, I think.
But we also weren't at a standstill, you know, PDE's saying no more, so...
Right, no more.
There is one architectural firm that did not recommend building on the new, on the existing high school site. So, I don't know if they took that information into consideration as part of their presentation, and just didn't make it clear to us that was Crabtree, you know, but they did not recommend building on the existing site. So, they may have taken that into consideration, maybe not, I don't know.
Alls I can say is that we have a lot of thinking of what we want to do next.
Other questions?
Um, yeah, this is just one that jumped in my head. So, Terry, you mentioned about air-conditioning the gym at the high school. So, if we did a project like that, is that something that PlanCon would say, "That's within the twenty-year, and you won't get reimb," okay? So, that's something separate that would...
No, it's a capital improvement.
Okay. Okay, so we would pay for that, it would not be...
Correct.
All right.
So, you know, that's why I brought up that the, all the schools should come to the high school to use the auditorium, especially if it's real hot out, because I've sat through the intermediate school in the auditorium when it's hot, and it's uncomfortable. So, that's why we have to try and work that out. And the sound system, hopefully, the two speakers will work, but if not, the sound system will be much improved at the high school. But that's something that the buildings have to work out, so...
Just a three-month difficulty period, though, in the spring here with the musical. I could see that creating some roadblocks, because I know the intermediate school has things planned already.
And I know that we ordered additional materials for Seth to work on some of the sound system at the intermediate school. So, it wasn't as if they didn't have the speakers, some of it was cabling and wiring, so we were able to order some of those things so that he could work on additional speakers.
And just one other thing about the ball fields, um, I know we're looking at renovating or building. Do we want to invest over two-hundred thousand dollars to fix those ball fields the way they should be? Or can we just, Mr. Nelson had said, maybe we could, and Mr. Wassler just, could we put them down at the practice, one of the practice fields at the high school, so... So, that's something we have to think about as well.
On the PlanCon, since we brought that up here with the high school, uh, correct, I apologize if you've already answered this, but if we did a renovation, like we was just suggested there with the entrance, that, the oldest wing there, do you think PlanCon would come into play with the previous renovation that we did there? I'm just curious if that becomes an issue.
I can't be certain to answer that question. Again, I need to wait for a response from PDE.
Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources with Mr. Cook.
I met this evening, several items on our agenda this evening. The fund balance transfer to Capital Projects is the first item we'll talk about. Spanko is recommending, um, move of one million ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to the Capital Projects Fund. This is a portion of the PlanCon money that was received this year from prior projects. And, um, the balance of that was used to basically balance our budget this year with the hopes that we would not need to pull other reserve fund money to balance our budget. So, next month, we'll have that recommendation coming before the full board, for full board approval. Secondly, District and State Budget Update. Can talk a little bit about the State Budget Update, which, there's a lot of questions. There's probably more questions than answers at this point in time. Debate is going on as to whether or not we'll have a budget in time for the typical end-of-June budget timeline that the state has. But unlike the state, we have to plow forward and make sure our budget is in place. We don't have a grace period if, if, think we can't work things out. So, that budget is currently being worked on, it's according to our budget timeline. Things are happening right now. Currently, for the community, our students and staff, there is a survey out, it's on our district website, and a link to go into that to be able to go in and voice your thoughts and your comments and opinions on what you feel are, are top priority, and so on and so forth, as we make plans for our budgeting. So, that is currently open, and will close on January thirty-first. So, it's, it's open to all students, staff, community members, board members, anyone that goes into this website. So, that is going on, and we'll continue to, to work through interactions with our principals, coming back to administration, and, you know, the reports and things that they need. So, we'll be working on budgets according to that timeline. Budgets never end, it seems like we're always working on them. Previous year, figuring it out, moving the current one, planning ahead, and this is no different. So, here we are. Along that line, speaking of more questions than answers, the buzz right now is talking about property tax reform and the potential that we may be looking at a, a law or a change in how property taxes are, are calculated or maybe possibly eliminated. There's a lot of what-ifs, there's a lot of questions, again, more questions than answers. One thing that I'll relay for our community is the idea of total elimination of property tax is a little bit of a misnomer. There's a lot of people that think that they won't be paying property tax, but a portion of it could potentially be eliminated. But property tax will still be paid for debt service, for example. So, there's, there's a lot of uncertainties about it, and it may not be as clean-cut as what everybody thinks it will be. So, I'm not quite sure how it's all going to impact us, and time will tell. It's not, not the first time this rodeo came to town, but it seems to have a little bit more push right now than what it did before. So, we'll have to make adjustments accordingly as we find out more details. Final item, then, we talked a little bit about mainstreaming off of a question that we had. Every month, there are certain payments that are made to other school districts related to students that attend those schools for various reasons. Some of those are related to special needs or learning support or whatever that other school districts provide that we don't necessarily in-house, and some of the, some of the costs associated with other aspects of that student's education end up being billed to the home district that sent the student that way. So, that question was raised, and that's really what that's about. The same thing happens in reverse. Some students come into our district for opportunities that we provide, and, and again, we bill for those. So, it's kind of a little bit of a give-and-take, sending the students to where they best can be served. So, I believe that was it. Did I miss anything, Mr. Eifert?
I think you covered it all.
Okay.
Questions for Mr. Cook? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Curriculum and Professional Development with Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman.
Okay, um, let me see. First thing we talked about was the proposed twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen calendar. It's similar to this year in that the snow days are attached at the end of the year. So, the, if, again, if we have no snow days, we would again be getting out prior to Memorial Day. During the discussion, there was some concern at the high school concerning the end of the semester being June, or yeah, June, January tenth, and then having a clerical day on the twelfth. So, kind of, um, having the, the finals on, on the tenth, getting kids for your new class the next day, and then having one day, and then having a clerical day. A suggestion was made to back up the, the end of the semester, one day to January ninth, and then have the clerical day on the tenth. And then the second semester would then begin on January eleventh, where, again, the students in that second semester can have two days of continuity before having another, another week. So, again, we'd say we'd bring that back to administration to see what their thoughts would be on to that. Again, another thing we were looking at was, this will also give two additional days in the second semester due to the Keystone exam interruptions, which, again, I never had, from a personal standpoint, I never really realized the interruptions of the Keystone, and the fact that that second semester actually loses several days of instructional time. So, again, that's, that was a suggestion on that. Another suggestion was, uh, for those folks who, who may be colorblind, wondering if maybe we can go back to using symbols instead of colors, or a combination of both. Let's see, then, we'll talk about the discussion held on the professional development days, a question was asked. As our understanding, Mr. Cherry, you can, you can correct us. Two days will be district plan days, and two days will be building level.
We didn't, you know, this year, we used a lot of those days district-wide. I did say going into next year, because we don't have a lot of new programs being added to the system that we would need as many days. So, um, our thought was to give as many days possible back to the school to plan for their own professional development. So, we don't have quite a numeric value to that.
Right.
But I did promise them that they would have more days this year, or in the next coming year, than they did this year.
And then, uh, there was a parent question, wondering why conferences were not scheduled at the high school for parents during that November session. Some of the, some of the high school teachers there are saying that in the past, parent conferences were building in the calendar, but they were discontinued due to lack of parental attendance at these conferences. And a suggestion was made to go ahead and, since the high school has a parent advisory council, to take that to them to see what their ideas may, may be concerning that.
And can I just interrupt? When we presented the calendar to administration, I gave them the same opportunity that we do for K-8, that they are more than welcome to have whatever conferences they would like to have during that flexible window that we have available. And they, too, can flex those hours and bank them towards, I think, November twenty-third, which I think is a clerical day. So, um, that opportunity just isn't for K-8, it's for anybody who would wish to do so.
And I know that, uh, some of the high school teachers that were in attendance said that normally, they, they schedule conferences as needed if students are struggling, so they, they kind of, you know, if, if they need to get in contact with parents, they go ahead and do that. And that was my last bullet point there. And another concern was just, kind of, just a, a, a thought brought up concerning the PIA season. Apparently, that they have the PIA requires that they can't have any preseason practices prior to August fourteenth. So, those teachers that are also coaches, again, are unable to, um, attend the preseason practices, like, during the day. So, again, just a, an FYI. And then, the last thing, the teachers asked if they would have, be able to have opportunities in the calendar for vertical planning. So, that was kind of what we had there. So, again, we're going to bring that back to the administration, kind of, make some changes, and hopefully bring it up for a vote at the February meeting. Second thing we talked about was Board Policy, two-thirty-five, Student Rights and Responsibilities. This is a policy that we currently have, that we're updating. We are changing it to using PSBA drafted policy. We did send it to a solicitor, solicitor reviewed it, and he had no problem with, they, I'm not sure who reviewed it, but they had no problem with the language. So, we're recommending to bring that before the full board for a vote, as well as Board Policy, twenty-three point one, and that's... policy 23.1 and that surveys, dealing with student surveys. And basically just said, again, it's a PSBA worded document. Basically, it says that students can't be forced to take these surveys, that they have to be educationally related and there is not allowed to be any private or other describable information, confidential information used for the students. And again, we had no problem with it and we're recommending coming before the full board for a vote. And that's all I have. Mrs. Herman?
No, I'm sorry. No, no, we're fine. That was great.
Any questions?
I have a question about the schedule. So are finals then for the, well, I guess for both semesters, are they going to be, I know in the past, they've been half-days. This year, they were full days. Are we keeping them at full days or going back to half-days? I guess my, part of my question is, so it came to my attention that, so they had finals, two finals on Friday, two finals on Monday. Let's say, I don't know which periods they did, but let's just say that they did periods one and two on Friday and then three and four on Monday. So when those students come in then, after taking finals on Friday, periods one and two, they go in the next day and during periods one and two, they essentially have nothing to do. I mean, the first day, yes, I guess they could review for finals for three and, for periods three and four.
Monday coming up.
And, you know, fill that time, but with the Monday especially, it just kind of seems like the kids are just sitting there with really not much to do because they can't learn new material. So I don't know why that switch happened, going from full days to half-days, but it kind of makes sense to me to give them half-days, but.
Let me work with the high school team to come up with a solution. So I'd like to give it to the department chairs to make that decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we do have an action item in this committee tonight, so I will entertain a motion to approve the early graduation of Christopher Patrick from the Dover area high school.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko. Motion carries. And last but not least, safe and supportive schools with Mr. DeShaw.
All right, we had two policies today. Policy 246, student wellness. It was brought to our attention that our food program is in the middle of an audit. Our recommendation right now is that policy 246 was sent to the state with, I believe, forty-some pages. So we recommend that we hold off until we get the results back in March, how that audit took place, to see if they feel that our policy needs any changes because apparently they are looking at it to review policy 246. So we recommend to hold off on that one until we get the results back. Policy 220, student expression, distribution and posting of materials. That was reviewed by the admin office and council and we recommend for the board's approval for next month. And that's all we had.
Okay. Any questions or discussion for Mr. DeShaw? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category. I think Mr. Cherry has a little bit of an exercise for us here that hopefully we can move forward with deciding on an architectural firm for this potential project. I think some of the discussions earlier lend to the fact that we need to make a decision sooner rather than later on this process so that we can get a lot of this answered for us. I know those charts are strategically positioned right in the middle of the screen tonight, so I don't know if we can turn the screen off or relocate the charts. I'll turn it over to Mr. Cherry.
All right, I just wanted to capitalize kind of on the opportunity that last week, we did hear from some architects about some of their proposals for our school districts. So I wanted to just really kind of take the chance right now, while it's still a little fresh in our heads, to kind of review what we thought, some of the positives and possibly maybe even some of the wonderings that we had about each one of the architects. And I guess as maybe even a starting point, it would be great to hear from the board, out of the four, would there be an architectural firm that we probably, or you feel that you wouldn't be interested in working with further? Obviously, we can talk about all four, but my feeling is if there's, you know, any of the firms that you have a strong desire not to work with, why, what's the sense of kind of delving deep into them if in the end, it's something that you weren't interested in? So I throw that out as the first question. Of the four that you see up there, are there any firms that you would not consider moving forward with, based on what you heard, read, reviewed?
Yes, I want to make my opinion. I cannot work with Crabtree. First of all, they came out like they were arrogant last week and I totally disregard people that come out and think they're better than anybody else.
I thought our LPS really missed the mark. I really didn't feel like they came prepared with what parameters we had given them, pretty much one idea and not even really discussing or touching what to do with the intermediate school, which is one of the major parts of what we need to know and trying to figure out. So unfortunately, I would, I was disappointed.
I was disappointed with two. RLPS was one and EI was the other. EI presented some very erroneous information in their presentations as well. I don't think they did some of their homework that needed to be done. I would tend to disagree a little bit with Mr. Nemig as far as Crabtree. I thought Crabtree brought a lot of professionalism to the table. When you look at the number of projects they've done across the state, they obviously know what they're doing. I was also impressed with McKissick as far as them thinking outside of the box with some new ideas. Unfortunately, those ideas, I don't think, are going to be able to be in the mix, you know, when it comes to the financial picture for us, but I think they're worthy of some discussion here. So in my opinion, I'd like to talk about the first one and the last one and eliminate the two in the middle.
I agree. I like the first and the last and eliminate the two in the middle.
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with that.
I concur as well.
Yep, you as well.
Mrs. Herman, are you comfortable with that, Mrs. Herman?
I felt the same way. I thought the two in the middle, like, I think Steve said he dropped, they dropped the ball. They just didn't get a lot. I felt McKissick gave us so many other things to think about, which I really appreciated. I didn't think that Crabtree went as far as I wanted them to go, but I'm not sure exactly how, what wording was given to them when they were to, all four of them to come and present to us. I really appreciated McKissick. I really liked the fact that they said too, that we have, well, several of them said we have a very structurally sound building. You know, now Crabtree didn't say that, so. But if I had any two to pick, I'd pick the first and the last also.
I felt like McKissick was the, I guess, the most personable in a way. I felt like when they were talking to us, they weren't just offering a presentation, they were really in a discussion with us. I really appreciated thinking outside the box. I thought that that was, because some of this, the discussion that we needed to have. I thought Crabtree did an excellent job of presenting their ideas. They were very professional. I did not find them as personable as I found McKissick in terms of first impression of being able to work and talk with people. I felt McKissick was definitely.
If I had to say a negative.
Can we just start with the process? Because if not, Bobby will go. Exactly. So, yeah, she's already given me that look when she walked up there. So let's start with McKissick. And maybe if we could just kind of go down the line here, maybe starting with Mr. Rahalser and start off by, you know, giving a positive that you thought from the presentation or something that they brought to the table.
So what, this is basically a moist opinion, which has, will be voted on, what, the next meeting or?
Yeah, we're just trying, I'd just like to get everyone's ideas.
No, what I meant is nothing.
Correct.
Well, I don't have no problem with, so we're going to do McKissick first and then Crabtree second.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll give them a plus.
Was there something about the presentation that you liked?
I just liked the whole presentation.
Okay. Mr. Cook?
I would say that they were very creative. They threw a lot of ideas, it's already been shared, intriguing ideas that probably, had they had maybe a little bit more preparation time and, you know, Crabtree doing our feasibility study, they had a little bit more of a leg up, I would say, a little bit more background to come in prepared. Unfortunately, some of the ideas that McKissick had, logistically, you know, like with utilities and things like that, they just didn't have that understanding and some of the ideas probably aren't able to be done. But I did like their creative thinking and thinking outside the box, like Rachel said.
Dennis, would you like to add anything to that?
I liked how they brought the technology here and we were able to see inside a building. I thought that was pretty interesting. It's a nice way to see it, just real life instead of just on paper.
Rachel?
Russ? Yeah, just, I mean, the thinking outside the box. And I believe it was them that had even said at one point towards the end, when they were getting some questions thrown at them, that their idea was not necessarily set in stone. Was it them that said that, that, you know, that even though they were talking about the high school and the high school property, that it didn't have to be that, that that was just one of the ideas they were giving us? I think it was them that had said that, but yeah, I don't know. All of the above.
Chuck, anything different than what you see there? Or you want to put a check beside something that you might agree with?
Well, yeah, again, I like that their presentation. Again, I think they're very creative. Even, I even go back to when they were here the very first time, when they gave their presentation, the booklet that they handed to us, everybody else just kind of did the introduction to who they are. But McKissick actually had done, I think, had done their homework even during that presentation and I don't remember exactly what it was anymore. But, you know, they actually were given ideas and suggestions within their, that presentation, which I really, at the very beginning, was impressed with and they continue to impress me with this. The other big thing I really liked about McKissick was their educational expert, if, so to speak, if that's what you want to call him. I thought he, he at least, he talks a really good game, so I'm hoping that he also is able to bring that to fruition, but he really had a lot of good ideas, had good knowledge about education and about the differences in student learning, which I think can really, will be able to be brought to the table and be advantageous for us.
I don't have much to add beyond what has already been said there. I do think they thought outside of the box. I thought they presented some creative ideas that unfortunately I don't think would work for us at this time. So I don't think they took it to the level where we needed to go as far as considering some of the other options, but I guess we'll get into the negatives in a little bit. But I would agree, the technology was very interesting that they brought to play for us. So yeah, consistent with what everybody else felt there.
Bobby, you started too soon. Amy?
I just, I pretty much agree with what Nate said. Everything positive, I agree with, but I do have a negative. I don't know if I should wait or, okay.
Mr. Nemig?
I agree with Mrs. Herman that they were the only ones that specified that the building at the intermediate school was very sound and worthwhile keeping.
Mrs. Herman?
Well, I don't have my pile of notes. I didn't know we were going to do this tonight. So I just remember that I really liked them because they did give us a different way of looking at the whole thing, which, you know, we've been pretty much set, this is how we're going to do things and I'm trying to save money. So I like the fact that they did offer the structurally sound building. I didn't hear Crabtree say that and I know I did, I did talk to them about the fact that they didn't address just renovating the middle school. I felt like they had, Crabtree had a little bit more information on some of the, like, they talked about that road that might go up, an extension of Intermediate Avenue, which McKissick didn't address, but I don't know that they knew that that was a possibility. So I'm not sure how the playing field was level as far as were they both told the exact same thing. So that was, you know, that was the only thing. I don't know why they didn't. And another thing, I had talked to Mr. Nelson about what he was thinking as far as renovations at the high school and he did say, he told me that he was, personally, he would just, like, the front door changed, all that section, because it's a lot of the old wood part. So they did talk about that, but McKissick did not. Again, they pretty much went into a much bigger renovation and that could have been too, because maybe they didn't know what Crabtree knew. I don't know. I don't know anything about this. It's so frustrating. I would still like to go visit.
We're going to arrange those next.
Both of those, yeah. And another thing that, maybe I missed it, Crabtree, not speaking, did they talk about the bridge over East Canal or West Canal? I know McKissick did. And I forget which one it was that talked a little bit about the bridge or using an underground.
Crabtree felt that there were better options than bridges and tunnels as far as more traffic control and things like that.
Okay. Because I did have, yeah, that tunnel thing really kind of freaked me out, yeah. I don't like that idea at all. But I was thinking too, if you have, okay, so how is this accessible for anybody in a wheelchair? Do we just push them across the street and not go over, you know, that's, I just want the high school with field. I just can't quite see putting a high school up on the hill and the kids have to walk down and cross the street to go to the field. Do they do gym classes out on the field? I don't know.
Sometimes.
Is he here, Mr. Waller? No.
They do sometimes. They participate on the field, yep.
And I don't know how that affects football games or anything. I know normally, they come right out from under the school there. I don't know, I just have kind of a block with separating those two. I worry about security, for one thing, for kids walking. I don't know how it's handled. I don't know what we're thinking with that.
I think that's all more project-driven, not architect-driven right now. I think those are the conversations that we would have to have with either one of these folks as far as what we wanted to do there.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
But not as far as picking the architect themselves.
All right. And again, they were both strong in a lot of ways.
So we'll keep on with the positives and maybe switch to Crabtree and we'll go the other way. So Mrs. Herman, what were some of the positives that you saw from Crabtree's presentation?
Well, I think they're extremely knowledgeable about schools because that's what they do. That's their field of expertise. So in that respect, I feel, I feel secure with them because they do do that a lot. Now, I do know though, that they did some work here in the district that I thought could have been a little bit better, but.
Mr. Nemig?
I really don't have nothing positive about them, other than they're very knowledgeable, like Mrs. Herman said. I've gone through them, the last renovation, and I just do not care for them.
Amy?
Like Mrs. Herman said, they are very knowledgeable and their experience, I think they have a lot of school, building, school construction experience. And I did get the, not being here in person, but watching through the video, I could, they seemed friendly and trustworthy, that they would be, and I said this in our committee meeting, that if we have a problem or we have an issue, they would be easy to work with, to fix things the way we would like them. They'd be flexible. Sorry, I'm throwing all these stuff at you there. Flexible and easy to work with.
As far as Crabtree, I thought they brought a level of professionalism to the table. I was very impressed with their presentation to us, both this time and the last time. I appreciate all of the work that they have actually put into this project already with the completion of our feasibility study. They've really done their homework with that. Solid understanding of plan con and how that operates. I think that probably weighed into their decision as far as not recommending a new building on the existing high school site. One of the big things for me is the fact that they're located 20 minutes down the road. that they're located 20 minutes down the road. I think one thing we need to remember while we're talking about McKissick Associates, McKissick is actually bringing in Fannie Howie as their lead architect for this, uh, idea, and Fannie Howie does not have an office here. They're in Ohio, Indiana, and North Carolina. So that, to me, is gonna be more of a challenge in dealing with the architect that is leading this project on a daily basis. So from Mr. Nelson and Mr. Cherry having to work with somebody day in and day out, that concerns me that they're not really truly the lead on this project. Crabtree, I had the opportunity through some of my PSBA Board President activities and through the State Conference this year to talk to other schools that have had work done through Crabtree. Every single one of them had very positive experiences, both from a renovation standpoint and a new construction standpoint. Nobody had anything negative to say about the experience with Crabtree. Um, so from that instance, our peers, uh, within the education world seem to be very pleased, and I think that's reflected in a number of projects they've completed, uh, throughout the state when you look at the chart of everything they've done, so.
Again, I think the only thing that, that I would add to that would be, again, same with, as with McKissick, um, they, they did, uh, bring an educational, uh, expert with them, who, again, I think was very knowledgeable, um, which, again, it, for me, it is very important that we're gonna have somebody that understands education, uh, educational needs of our students. And then the other thing I just, I, I think, is a familiarity we have with them, uh, with, and, and they with us, uh, with having, uh, done other projects for us in, in the district. Um, I, I think that could, could lead to some, um, comfort level, uh, with knowing each other in that respect.
Mrs. Mallon?
I don't really have anything new to add. I mean, I thought they were very professional in their presentation.
Mr. DeShaw?
Uh, for Crabtree, I believe they also said that they guaranteed their budget, so that was the one thing I was impressed with. As for McKissick with not being local, one of the very first things out of their mouth said, that they said that all of their people are in-house in Harrisburg. So I don't know if that's true or not, but...
The McKissick people are, but not the Fanning and Howie people.
Okay, well, they, I thought they said that all of, even the architects were going to be there in the building. That's all I have.
Mr. Cook?
There's an insurance company that advertises out there about some wild and wacky things, uh, and they, they show those wacky things and they say, been there, done that, and we insured it. It's kinda like an impression I got with, with Crabtree. They've seen it, they've done it, they've been through it. Their experience and, and their personnel is long-term. That's worth something to me, I think, is that evaluate a, uh, an architect. Um, I didn't really get the vibe that they were arrogant. I got the vibe that they were extremely confident, and that, to me, is worth something as well. Um, so I think that's, their, their level of expertise, the fact that, you know, the materials that they left with were so crystal clear and gave us a lot of insight into different projects that they've done, and most of the projects came in under budget. Now, maybe that's only the ones they wanted to share in a book. That's possible, but I was impressed with the fact that the proposed amount that they projected was actually materialized in less, so I thought that was a really good positive. I would definitely wanna see more of their local projects that they've done, like Mrs. Herman said.
Mr. Raoulhauser?
Well, on that, I was, uh, I guess maybe it was too professional for me, uh, but I just thought that, um, they just came sort of down the competition. Uh, yes, they've done a lot of projects. They have a lot of good points, and the other thing I wasn't impressed was sitting through, that I didn't know we were trying to build a high school out of the intermediate school. And since they had the inside information, I don't know why we were presented with that information in the first place. And they didn't present nothing about renovating the intermediate school as far as an intermediate school. And the man told me, he says, "Well, that's back at the office."
Can we, can I add one more thing on Crabtree that I thought was a positive? And that was their ability to generate, um, grant monies from outside sources to help with construction costs. They had some demonstrated experience in bringing outside funds in to help alleviate some of the construction costs.
Uh, I guess we'll list them as concerned, so how about any of the concerns for McKissick and Associates? So, we'll start back down again. Mr. Raoulhauser, any concerns? We already have some logistical, um, concerns, possibly not local.
At the present time, I don't, I really didn't put a lot of thought in this. We were gonna do this tonight.
Mr. Cook?
I guess maybe to come at us with a lot of different ideas like that, perhaps maybe they should have asked a few more questions about the practicality of some of their ideas. Um, you know, that may have flavored what they presented to us.
Mr. DeShaw?
Um, I guess the, my only concern would be getting to, uh, if they are local or not, would be the major one. From what I took from it, they said they were local and in Harrisburg, so...
Yeah, just to, to, to jump on that, I, um, I mean, I think that's a simple phone call before we vote in February to find out, okay, how local are they going to be? Is that going to be an issue or not? Because maybe it's not going to be, and we're just making it a bigger issue than it needs to be, so I would wanna have that information first.
For me, I, nothing really major jumped out, I mean, on the negative side, honestly, for, for either McKissick or Crabtree. Um, honestly, I'd be, I would be okay with, with either of them at this point, so.
Mr. Raper?
I've already said, uh, my negative, you know, that I had with McKissick. I really didn't have anything negative with Crabtree.
Mrs. Burton?
I really, I, I didn't really see anything negative with Crabtree either. Um, with McKissick, in addition to the not-local concern, which really concerns me, um, I also am concerned that, like we had talked about in our committee, that they didn't know that we would lose the PlanCon money. And if they have these PlanCon experts, why did they not know that if we build on the high school site, we would have to pay back the PlanCon money and, so, uh, uh, that, that kinda sends a red flag to me that they're not, maybe they're not doing their homework, or, to me, something that simple, they shouldn't, and maybe that's why Crabtree didn't really propose anything for the high school site. Um, but that, that jumped out at me for, for McKissick.
Mr. Emmett?
Nothing to add?
Mrs. Herman?
Okay, um, I guess a minus I have for Crabtree, and this could also be a, a minus for McKissick, because we went through, uh, other building projects with Crabtree, and there were some drawing issues, some things that, like right outside here with the lights, uh, which drives me absolutely crazy, that that was wrong. Um, that bugs me, knowing that they made those errors in drawings and we had to kinda live with it. McKissick, I don't know that they do that, and maybe they all do that, maybe, just like, um, Mr. Cherry, you sent us an email about the, the hot water heater over at Dover Elementary. Well, they put in an 80-gallon hot water heater. I mean, who does that for, that's, I understand...
That was the temporary one that we put in.
Okay, so then the original people did put the correct size in, and it just went bad.
Yeah, and we had to replace it, so we wanted to ensure that we were trying to get some hot water in the school. We replaced it with an 81, 80 gallon, until the new one came in.
So that wasn't them, all right. Um, but there were other things along the way that I heard about, and, um, so that's why, uh... But I did speak to a friend of mine who works for Kinsley. He's a field, um, manager or something. And he said, "You have all the time with architectural drawings." He said they do it, there's so many change orders and all that. So maybe it's true of everybody. I just got a little frustrated with Crabtree, knowing some of the things that were done weren't, you know, weren't, to me, should never have happened, but anyway. And I, but I do know that Dave has worked with Crabtree before, and I would like, and he, he had a good relationship, and I think that's extremely important with a building project, for our project manager to feel comfortable with the company that he has dealt with before, and I also think he's probably, um, a little bit of aware, more aware of what he can, um, go after them about or discuss with them than he would know about McKissick, so I don't know.
When you do bring up a good point, I know Dave Nelson and Chuck Benton, uh, and even Brad Perkins, they've participated in both evenings as well, so I don't know if the board's interested, but I'd be curious to hear any reactions you have to any of these.
We've all had the opportunity to share our opinions, and actually, to me, I really wanna hear their opinions, particularly Dave's. Dave's gonna be responsible for managing this day in and day out. We're not. We vote. We say, "Make it happen." He needs to actually make it happen in the end. So I think I really need to rely on Dave's opinion and thoughts before I can make up my mind on either two of these. I, I think they're both highly qualified organizations, but these folks are the ones that are gonna do this.
May I ask a question as, as Dave's getting ready to, to speak? I, I was just curious, do the architects have the ability to choose their contractors that they, that they use? You hear horror stories sometimes with contractors that have nothing to do with the architect, and how, I don't know how that comes into play, but...
We, we had that on, on the three projects I worked with, Crabtree, we had that on all three projects. And state regulations say you must take low bid, end of discussion. To the point of, and I'll, I'll tell you a horror story, you could have a contractor come in, let's just say, for Dover Elementary, when we re-did this, he could get a third of the way through the project, say, "I'm done, I'm walking out, I'm finished, I'm not gonna finish the job." Literally, he can do that. If he bids on your next project and he's low bid, you have to take him. You have no choice. The litigation would just tear you up if they, if they, if they went back for you, so. Yeah, that, and Steve just, he, he, he just asked me the same question a minute ago back, "You have to take low bid," which is very, very unfortunate. Um, so, I, 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 I'd like to share with you a couple of things, and I know probably no one in this room knows this stuff, so, but I'll share it. Um, I worked on, uh, the Waggles Town project, the, the stadium project, and Dover Elementary project with them. And yes, there was errors in drawings, and a lot of the errors in the drawings were not so much on the new construction side, but on the remodeling side, because you don't know what you're, what you're gonna get to when you take a wall down. Um, and that's where we ran into most of our change orders. One thing that happened at, um, the stadium project was, and I know Kathy can ask Phil, or she might even remember this, about three days before school started, we couldn't get any sewer water down the sewer line. And it was a Friday afternoon, and school started on Tuesday. So, we weren't sure why, so we started scoping it from both ends and realized there was a section about 20 feet that we couldn't get through. We couldn't even see it. What had happened was it was a, um, terracotta line buried down about 18 feet. It was very deep, and they were using, uh, impact roller on it, which kinda vibrates as it runs, to pack it down, and it collapsed the line. It was not a contractor error, it was not a architectural error. It was just like an unforeseen thing. Who knew that that was brittle and it was gonna crush that deep? At the time, Phil, Kathy's husband, was on the board, and we had two, two representatives here from Crabtree Roarball. Phil was here, I was here on a Saturday to repair that line. They stood right by us when we did it, made sure it was done right. Um, about two, year and a half, two years, and I'm, time's escaping me now, uh, we, we had a sinkhole in the track, and it was a contractor error. They had cut off a drain line, and we had to dig it up, and, of course, we had to prove it was their fault and make them pay for it, which they did. Again, Crabtree stood right by us as we did that and helped us with that litigation and, and getting them to, to, to repair what was wrong. Um, and then when we built Dover Elementary, it, it almost sounds funny, but I know Steve can attest to this, 'cause he, he was part of it. Uh, we were probably, was it two days before school started or three, when we found out we couldn't get a bus around the loop? Um, one of the landscape architects, who was KNW Arch, KNW, which they presented with, help me out.
I think, wasn't it McKissick? It was one, I don't remember.
It was McKissick and somebody else, but anyway.
It was EI.
EI, okay, I, I, I thought they were here for two, but maybe not, but anyway. It was KNW Architects. The guy didn't think that a bus took that much room to turn. Bus would not go around a corner without backing it up. And, you know, that was not a contractor fault, that was not a Crabtree fault, that was a KNW fault. That was their, that was their mistake. And, um, Tom Crabtree, who was the other half of Crabtree and Roarball, came out, and at the time, Dr. Krantz was our superintendent, and we worked all weekend to get that, we dug it up, we took the curb out, we put new curb in, we blacktopped it and had it ready for the start of school. We never paid a penny on that. Crabtree Roarball covered 100% of that. And I don't know if they went back on KNW. I'm guessing they did, but I don't know that. But we never, we never saw a bill, we never paid a penny. It's just, it's a testimonial for me, so. I do, I do feel comfortable with them, I'll be honest with you. Um, and I've, I've seen what they'll do for you when the chips are down. You know, they'll stand behind you and they'll help you and they'll get you through it, so. I don't know anybody else.
Can I ask you a question, Dave?
Sure.
What, what about, um, the gym at Waggles Town? There was an issue with that, but I know it was too small, but who, who was responsible for that? How?
Well, we, we had some constraints at, at the gym. Well, the gym at Waggles Town is sorta like the gym here, again, where we had some constraints with, with area. Um, we couldn't go a whole lot wider with that gym because, as you know, now it pushes the driveway out. We'd have pushed it out even further, um, and there's a major water line that comes down through that parking lot. So we, we were restricted by that. Uh, one of our, one of our biggest issues at Waggles Town was, um, was water. We had so much rain that year, it was unbelievable. Uh, at one point, where the gym currently is, we had four feet of mud in that gym, uh, which had to be taken out before we could put stone and concrete in. One of the other things that, 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 and Tom Crabtree was the one that was involved in this, was when we got done this project, we ran over. We were supposed to be done in, by the time school started, in September, and we finished up the library and something else, help me out, art room? Art room. Around Thanksgiving. We went through, the help of the architect, back against the contractors, all three of them, and got over $100,000 back because they ran over. They never charged us for any of that, any of that. And it, we, we had a lot of meetings on that. I mean, we had a lot. I mean, we brought each contractor in. We brought the electrical, we brought the general, and we brought the plumbing, 'cause they were the three that were holding it up. We brought them in, we sat each one of them down, and we went through why, you know, why we were late, and we had that in the contract that it had to be done by that date, and it wasn't done. And weather is not an excuse to be late. Labor is not an excuse to be late. If you're late, running late, the project's not on schedule, you don't extend the project, you accelerate the construction schedule. You don't extend it, you just accelerate. You bring more people on board, which architects don't like to do, or contractors don't like to do that because that costs more money, so.
I ask you a slightly different angle question.
Yep, yep.
Um, a lot of the different ideas that were thrown out at us came from architects who were kinda given the same information, but they, they came back with different ideas. Something like was shared seemed logistically, uh, unable to be done. Something like was shared seemed logistically unable to be done, others PlanCon restricted, unable, possibly, logistically. Whenever those contractors, you know, get into the middle of a situation like that, and they have to work with, you know, logistical things you weren't expecting, do you feel like, like they always will be right there? You know, they said they will be, they said they're close, they can be here right away, do you?
Yeah, they will, they will.
You feel really comfortable that, you know, they'll back that up?
I have one other scary story. It was on this project, and I know Steve will remember this, too. The Sunday before Memorial Day, got a call, Sunday morning, "We used a million and a half gallons of water at Dover Elementary." And I'm saying, "We're not even there, how could we use a million and a half gallons?" But, I was assured that it was us, because as soon as they shut it off, all the pumps shut off, we were at the burr. There used to be a basement in this building, and I fought really, really, really hard, and Steve was at those meetings, to not put anything in a basement, because if it floods, you lose everything. And contractors, architects, they wanted to put the mechanicals in the basement, your electric and your stuff like that, and I've really, I mean, I really fought hard for that. When I came in, we had nine feet of water in the basement. Realized this is Sunday before Memorial Day. We got school starting back on Tuesday. I've got all my electrical panels, my boilers, everything is underwater. Crabtree was here Sunday and Monday, as well as the contractors. But, we got the contractors in here because of the help we got from the architect to get them here. And we got school, we were...
You're lucky you're still alive.
Yeah, we're, yeah, let's not go there, because I went in the water before it was out. But, Steve, Steve can attest this, we were open Tuesday morning for school at regular time. We didn't miss any school at all. Power never shut off, that's the, that's another story, but power never shut off. So.
Are you saying McKissick can't do that, though?
I didn't say they couldn't, I said, "I don't know if they could." I don't know if they would. I don't know them, I'm, I'm only telling you, I only will tell you what I know, what I've dealt with. I'm not saying because they couldn't or wouldn't, I'm just trying to give you an insight to what I know. I don't have experience with McKissick, or EI, or RLPS, but I've worked with Crabtree, and that's, I'm trying, you know, trying to let you know how they handled different emergencies. And, and by the way, the water was, it was a, the, the plumbing contractor had put a temporary water line in with a barb fitting, and it blew apart. That's what, that's why it flooded. So.
My comments are very simple and straightforward, because many of the things that I have felt and sensed during the presentations are already up there. So, looking at it, prior to coming to the district, I had a pleasure, pleasure of being a consultant for eight years, evaluating vendors, sitting on your side, sitting there evaluating different proposals, and having to go through all that process. At the end of the day, the things we always looked at were, one, can we trust them? Do we really have that gut feeling of, can we trust, based on other comments and feedback that we've received from other customers? But, more importantly, does our day-to-day project manager trust them? Are they comfortable with them? And if they said yes, then a lot of times, we, okay, then let's look, let's dig even further. But, the third thing is, who's going to have your back, not only today and tomorrow, but into the future? Because we're not talking a year-long project, or a two-year or a three-year project. We're going to be working with whomever day-to-day for years and years to come. So, that's my only advice, is when you're starting to evaluate all this, who, who are you the most comfortable with, and who can you work with? You guys might see them once a month, but Dave's going to have to live with them every day. So, that's just my only advice, when you're looking at this.
I can agree with everything that's up there on that board. I just want to bring something to your attention, and I think it even goes down to your new mission statement. Engage Empower 21st Century Learners. The two designs that were presented, I know they're only hypothetical, but there was only one of the two that matched your vision, your own mission statement here at the school, where you bring, when you start looking at all the programs offered for all students, as we move forward, engaging our 21st century learners, together. One of them, one of those designs had programs separated in various locations throughout the building. Crabtree, Roarball did the nicest job of following your own mission statement, of putting all the programs together and bringing forth your 21st century learning, I think the best out of both, to even what you're looking forward in your, in your mission statement as you look to move the district in the right direction. So, keep that in mind, because this building's going to be around a while. You know, we're currently, we're here because those buildings are, are up for over 40 years now. So, pay attention to that, and listen to what your own thoughts are on your own mission statements, and think about what they presented. So, but they both did a nice job thinking outside the box. But Crabtree, Roarball, I think, for not knowing a whole lot, brought it together even in your own mission statement for the district and your, and the students. So, just keep that in mind.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on, on the differences? Because I'm not sure I grasp that quite like you're presenting it. Can you elaborate?
Well, if, if you looked at the flow within the building, Crabtree, Roarball had like an oval, where it doesn't matter if you were performing arts, arts, CTE student, academic, they all flowed together. So, we are trying to build a culture where they're, everything goes together, it's not separated. McKissick designed a building where they were separated. Your performing arts, arts were in one portion, your academics were separated from that, and your, and your CTE programs were even further away from everything. So, to, they don't gel together as you're trying to make everybody have the ability to work together, and from academics to performing arts to career and technical ed, just the flow of the building separated and creates those silos when we're trying to pull everybody together into an open-air market, so we can do a lot more cross-curricular activities. Does that help?
Can I add something to that? And I, I think that is essential and plays, goes hand-in-hand with the, the academy-based learning that we're moving towards, where you have the flow, but the students can still, you know, here's, here are the different academies, but they still all flow together. So, you're not ostracizing one academy versus another academy. You still are Dover School District, Dover High School.
One of the things I want to do that we didn't do, because we got sidetracked a little bit, was, I know we did some concerns with McKissick, but we didn't actually complete the list for concerns with Crabtree, Roarball. So, I just wanted to go back down the table to make sure that we captured everyone's concerns with Crabtree. So, Mrs. Herman, anything else that you'd like to add?
I guess not, no.
Ms. Remick?
Nope.
My only concerns would be the ones that are up there with the previous concerns, but after listening to Dave give his testimonials, I think that says a lot for their commitment to projects, and, and that kind of eases my trepidation a little bit.
Ms. Riefer?
I have none.
Mr. Delauter?
No, I don't have anything that really stands out, no.
Mr. DeSho?
The only concern that I would have with Crabtree is the fact that it does seem that everybody is good, they're, they like them. My biggest concern would be, if everybody's familiar with them, how relaxed are you going to be when they're doing it? With McKissick, somebody new coming in, you're going to be more watching every single thing? That would be my own concern.
Mr. Cook?
I don't have anything else that's not already been listed.
Mr. Rohse?
Nothing else.
Could I ask one thing of Dave? Dave, Crabtree's, I don't know, what do you call them, subcontractors or whatever, were they all basically the same companies that you had dealt with before also? Okay.
We had, we had different contractors on every job we did. I never once had the same contractor a second time.
I'd also like to hear from Mrs. Benko. She's the one that has to tell us how we're going to figure out how to pay for any of this, too, so I'd like to have her thoughts as far as this as well.
I haven't dealt with McKissick much, just communication back and forth via email, but I have dealt a lot with Crabtree, not only with this, you know, the presentations here today, but they are very good and professional about contacting me with any upcoming issues. They are always invited and to different things PSBA does, different studies that the Department of Transportation, or the Department of Education does, the reworking of PlanCon. They will, as soon as they go to any workshop, or, you know, or are a part of any group like that, they call me. And it may not have nothing to do with a building project. They call me about property tax elimination, and, you know, some of the things that they found out through PSBA and things like that. So, not only are they definitely dedicated to a project, but they're very professional and just, you know, give, give us advice, and, and tell us things that maybe they have the inside scoop on with legislators or upcoming issues that, that we may face. Whenever the PlanCon moratorium was put in place, we had two weeks to file for a reimbursement. Ken, myself, Dave, Jared, sat down for two days trying to put this PlanCon document together. Between the four of us, none of us are architects, none of us are engineers, and we were literally, "What are we going to do? When you're talking about four, five, six million dollars, you want that money." We called Crabtree, we had three days to get it done, and they did it. So, I mean, just that dedication and the professionalism that they give to us, and, you know, the way they work with Dave and myself, sets the bar high for them, for, in my opinion anyhow.
Rachel, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a comment. I mean, in following up on that, you know, it's clear that Crabtree and Roarball, I mean, they're a reputable architect. You know, I don't, I don't know that we would necessarily go wrong by choosing them. It sounds like there are many, many positives. I think the other piece of it, though, is that, you know, you didn't call McKissick and ask them to bail you out in those three, that three-day period. So, maybe they would have done the same thing. The flow of the building that Chuck talked about, I, I agree. I think Crabtree did an excellent job of, of creating that oval, all-inclusive kind of drawing, but it doesn't mean that McKissick wouldn't do that. I, I, I mean, did they present that in their original plan? No. But, I do remember them making a comment about being willing to, you know, that they were open to other ideas, which is part of the reason they were thinking outs, thinking outside of the box in the first place. So, you know, I know we've obviously done work with Crabtree, they're obviously an excellent outfit, but it, it doesn't necessarily mean that McKissick wouldn't be. So, you know, just trying to keep that in mind, too. I think in going and visiting projects that they've done, and talking to some of the people, the, you know, all the key players in their districts, I think will definitely add some further insight, and I think is absolutely necessary.
And I think that's kind of a good segue into closing out this activity. I'm going to go through both of their portfolios and just kind of call some superintendents and arrange something possibly during the second week in February. So, it'll be our, an around-the-way tour, so to speak, so maybe we'll be here, we'll load up in the vans and go visit some, some of their buildings. So, I'll try to keep it as local as possible on both sides, so that we're not running everywhere, but, so kind of take a look at your calendars, maybe about that second week in February, and I'll try to arrange at least two for each one of the architects for us to go visit, and hopefully, some of their key people, their facilities and, facilities people will be there, and we can ask them some questions.
And maybe, like you did before, we have those meetings, we could generate a list of questions.
Questions, yeah.
I mean, not that we have to stick to a set script, but just have some questions that we make sure that we ask both tours.
Yep. So, we'll work on those. So, I'll send out that email. I'll put it as part of my update tomorrow to everyone.
Before we do that tour, could you find out how local McKissick is, and just shoot us an email to let us know if they are all available in Harrisburg, or if they are...
We'll take some of your concerns and stuff, we'll try to work on that, maybe not for tomorrow's update, but maybe for following Friday, and we'll try to answer some of the questions that you have up there, that you have down as concerns.
One of the, I just wanted to make a comment as well. I think of all the four, of the four different architects that came and presented, I was amazed how many different opinions there were, and it made it a little difficult to even think, "Which direction do you want to go?" But, I want to sit back and try to evaluate, what did they actually present to us? I think Crabtree probably came back with the closest presentation to what we had actually asked them to do, with potential of a new high school versus renovation. They did talk about the renovation of the intermediate school as a high school, but they did, that was one of their options to us, perhaps, I can't speak for them, but perhaps, knowing the PlanCon issue eliminated the ability to put a high school at the current high school facility. But, you know, just looking at the, the numbers, it's almost as expensive to renovate the intermediate school as it would be to build a new school, and, and I wouldn't want to tear down a building just because, but when you look at economic feasibility and practicality, I have a hard time getting past that. So, you know, when they brought that information back, I thought, you know, they brought back what we asked them to do, and they, they made it very clear, to me at least, with, I mean, what, in my opinion, what I would be viewing is a pretty clear direction. So, I thought that was, that was another positive for them.
I'd still like to see their concept for renovated middle school. They didn't show that, and that's why my mind keeps going to McKissick. I'd like to see what they'd have to offer. I know that's putting the cart before the horse.
Anything else from the board members tonight in the miscellaneous category?
Can I, I just wanted to say something as far as renovation. I've probably said it before, and I don't know if now's the proper time to bring it up, or, you know, further down the road. I, I really hesitate when I hear renovation, just based off of everything that, that we've talked about. And we've all seen those HGTV, you know, shows where it's supposed to be a $5,000 renovation, and, "Oh, well, no, this, this turns into..." And, and like Jared said, with the media center, had those boards not been able to stay up, there was tape asbestos all behind those bulletin boards. Who knows what we're going to find, if we, I just think we really need to keep that in mind, because I would really hate to see the cost snowball just because, and then get a half, I can't think of a polite way to, you know, not what we really want out of the project, or, you know, poorly-done project, because, you know, I, I think we really need to keep that in mind.
Anybody else?
Just want to make a comment, follow up a little bit on the gentleman's concern about the, the financing of it, or the potential, you know, the money, the, the amount of money associated with any kind of a building project, whether we renovate or whether we build, is large. It's a, it's a high number, and it's a little bit scary to think, you know, that you're talking millions and millions of dollars. As a board member, it's, it's, one of the jobs that you have is to balance those concerns with trying to make sure you're providing an educational opportunity for the students, and having had a chance to walk through the current intermediate school, and realizing of its shortcomings, you know, there's, there's a tug on your heart as well about what they're potentially missing, if you don't do something. And, you know, six, 60 million, if it turns out to be that, 50-some, 60-some, you use the number 70, it's still a fluid number right now to figure out what it is, is going to be, but we currently have a $58 million annual budget that we operate off of. I, I'm not a rocket scientist, and I'm not a mathematician, but... but when I look at the cost of, of a project like this versus, you know, your current income, so to speak, you know, $58 million project versus a $58 million building, for example. If, if you or I could go out and buy a house for one year of our annual income, we would jump all over that. You know, you can't do that. So when I look at, at a project like this, yes, it's a high number, but I look at it compared to the income that we currently have. It puts it a little bit more in perspective for me. So that helps me to, you know, to quantify a little bit whether or not it's, it's practical. Currently, you know, this board has tried their best to be fiscally responsible knowing that, you know, there's some things coming down the road that we need to address. You know, our tax rates right now are fifth lowest in the county. And so, you know, we're, we're doing what we can to try to be fiscally responsible and not saddle anybody with additional expenses. And in reality, if we do a building project like this, a small tax hike, it can't be ruled out, but it's well within reason. And even if we were to engage in a project like this, the implication wouldn't be like a $60 million lumped on top of you and it's going to, you know, jack your taxes way up and that sort of thing comparative as things stand right now. So I know if, if you're just tuning in or you're, you're thinking about this whole concept of, wow, that's a lot of money, you know, it's just going to, everybody's taxes are going to go through the roof. We're just, I think fiscally, that's not, that's not the case. So if you can leave here tonight to know that we are thinking about all those things and trying to weigh all those factors into a decision that we make. You know, whether renovation is the right answer, whether building a project or building a brand-new building is the right answer. You know, you've got nine people up here, 10 people and beyond that are looking at everything, including the impact to the community. Please rest assured, we are doing that. So I just wanted to take time to address that with you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. Again, if you have anything you'd like to state, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record.
Jason McKinney, 6691, there's no route. Sherry Moonin, CM walked, is it Mike? Um, thank you, Mr. Cook, for that personal touch. Y'all was a little concerned. Thank you, Mr. Reifert, for bringing that up during the discussion about mon, money. My questions there would be, what's the architect's fee? And there was one architect that said they had zero change orders or their percentage would have been less than zero if there hadn't been owner, owner-originated change orders. And that's pretty impressive, but that wasn't part of it. Mrs. Britton, the asbestos is going to be, need to be abated whether you demolish the entire school or do a renovation. So it's kind of, it's there. Mr. Emig? Mr. Nelson went over some of the horror stories of trying to do schoolwork, running into the school year. And it's bad for the board, it's bad for the residents, it's bad for the teachers, the pupils, the students all around that when that happens. And just a suggestion, maybe put it off in, in smaller pieces. Make it phase the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKinney. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody on the move. Future meeting announcements. Our next board action meeting will be February 21st at 7:00 PM. And our board committee meetings will be February 23rd at 6:00 PM. And our board planning meeting will be February 23rd at 7:00 o'clock PM.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Two things. I don't know if anything was put out. I know it was in the morning paper last week that there's a meeting at York Suburban next week for anybody that might be thinking about running for school board. I don't know if the Dover District put anything out or not. Okay. And the other item is, it talked about in our facility meeting, and I forgot it, was I thought it'd be nice if the realtor would come to our next board meeting or the committee meeting and give his thoughts on what we should do with the Crawltown School as to, you know, possibilities, the price is too high, what options there are because I don't know how much it's costing us every year, but it's costing us money to keep that going. And the building is deteriorating. And one of these days, somebody will say the roof's leaking. And then we have more problems. But I think it would be nice if he could come in and what his thoughts are, or what, you know, we should give it away or, but we need to do something with it because the building just deteriorates sitting empty.
I've got an update from Chris. Okay. If there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you.